I'd like to call the special city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the role please?
Mayor Tommy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snatie Gorupilait. Councilmember Malteff. Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Eskogoff.
Here.
Thank you. I'm now going to move to go into executive session pursuant to section 4.5 Karen B. of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for the review of applications for any supportive position. Interviews and appointments shall be conducted in an open meeting. Hi Heather. Thanks for coming this evening. Do you have handouts?
I do.
Go ahead, go right ahead. Let me trip on this, it just fell.
Well, following my interview with you all on Saturday, Ron was kind enough to follow up with me with some initial feedback. So what I've put together for you is a small portfolio. And within the portfolio, what I've done is I've included some of the work products that I've produced over the past few years. On the left-hand side though, most importantly, I wanted to provide you with a visual of my direct reports, who works on my administrative services leadership team within the City of Wheat Ridge, along with the executive management team that I work with on a daily basis, along with the Foothills Animal Shelter Board of Directors roster. I serve as president of the Board of Directors. I'm in my second year in that role, so I wanted to give you a snapshot of the individuals that I work with on a daily basis, along with the report that I put together for the Wheat Ridge Fire District that was called the Blue Ribbon Panel. And I authored that report in working with four other community members. So I just thought it'd be appropriate to give you more of a picture of the different stakeholders that I've worked with, especially so that way we can have a more constructive dialogue tonight about the question that I know that's on your minds in terms of my ability to lead the director group here at the City of Northland.
Well, thank you for providing this to us. It's fine. Okay, well, we have some questions that we've prepared, and I'll just start out and we'll just kind of go around like we've done before.
Great.
So, the first one that I have is, since this is going to be your first time to serve as a city manager, or even an assistant city manager, can you please share the specific strategies you would utilize to build trust and confidence in your leadership on the part of a strong team or veteran department heads?
Absolutely. Great, great question, leading into the information that I just distributed to you. I think being that this would be my first city manager role, I do think that I have experience while not the direct title at an assistant city manager level. I think the work, the level of responsibility that I've had at the City of Wheat Ridge does rise to that level. So one of the things that I would first do, and I think I included this in the semifinalist question responses, is to work to build rapport with the directors. I believe that serving in a management role is a privilege, and it's humbling for me to get to the work, to work with the people that I work with on a daily basis. I find it very rewarding to work with the different personality types that I work with, and so establishing a connection, building rapport with directors, getting to know each director, what motivates them, why do they do what they do here at the City of Northland? What kind of hobbies do they have? What makes them who they are as an individual? And then learning more about what they'd like to see happen at the City of Northland? What are their challenges? What are their struggles? Where do they have issues? Where do they need support from me as the city manager? And really, you know, establishing a rapport and figuring out a balance of how we work together. I have a very collaborative management style, and so I believe in two-way communication, direct and open communication. And that's something that even though I'm soft-spoken and introverted naturally, I believe is a strength. I believe I've been able to build bridges and tear down walls, so to speak, in difficult personnel situations where perhaps a more aggressive or extroverted personality style hasn't been able to accomplish that. So I think by building rapport, you in turn build trust, and I think that's also a two-way street in terms of me becoming city manager. You know, not only I'm building the trust in my directors, but they're building the trust of me. And I strive for win-win situations, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with the management team here at the City of Northland. Again, I find value in learning from others, and I think I can learn a lot from each of the directors here.
Thank you.
Heather, I like this question. Who is your mentor or role model as a city manager? What about that individual makes them your role model? And in what ways would your leadership and management style be different from them?
I have several, but I'm going to use my current boss, Patrick Offe, Wheat Ridge City Manager. Patrick and I have different styles, and we often joke that I'm the tough one, and he gets to be the good guy in certain situations, and he'd be completely okay with me saying that to you all. Patrick, really, I think early on in my career, helped me better understand what it means to balance your head and your heart. And because I'm naturally a very analytical, strategic individual, you know, sometimes I can say, "Well, this is just the way it's supposed to be. This is the logical course of action." But under his supervision and in working with him over the past nine years that I have, I think I've grown to better understand what it means to use your heart and to balance the two. Anytime I'm dealing with a difficult personnel situation, you can't use one or the other, it's both. And so I think I've learned a great deal from him in that respect, and that's why I respect and admire him as our city manager.
Heather.
Thank you for coming out. You have done an incredible amount of research on Northland. Based on everything you know so far, what do you think we need in a city manager that will be long-term and help us achieve our goals as a council?
Great question. From talking with all of you, with the exception of Becky and Joe, I'm sorry I wasn't able to connect with you via phone, I think I heard pretty consistent themes when I asked the question about what do you want the new city manager to bring to the table? And I heard themes like energy, visibility, strong leadership. And in asking the director team that similar question, I think the key theme I heard from them was strong leadership. Really having somebody there that's visible to, you know, provide direction when directions needed, and to really lay the foundation and guide staff in the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Joe?
Without mentioning anyone by name, what are the characteristics that you think make an elected official a challenge to work with? I think that question was appropriate to me.
Long pause. You know, that's a great question, but I'm going to answer it a couple different ways because I think I go back to the fact that we live in a democratic society, and I'm a firm believer in our form of government and the opportunity for citizens to elect individuals such as yourselves to represent them within the community. So I think while, you know, one personality type over another may seem challenging at times, I think it's the combination of personality types that creates a synergy, and it's something that I've seen with this council, in particular when I had the opportunity to meet with you last Friday evening, when I've watched council videos of former study sessions and council meetings. I think one of the things I appreciate about each and every one of you is you ask good questions, you're respectful to one another, and that at the end of the day, you want the best thing for the City of Northland. And ultimately, that's, I think, what's most important in terms of your roles as elected officials. So, you know, I can't pick one or two traits. I think I'm a very collaborative person, so I can work with all different manage, all different personality types. And I think, you know, one of the things for us to think about moving forward is, you know, how do we manage conflict if conflict arises? And that's one of the questions that I have for you all at the end of my interview tonight, is to get a better pulse from you of what that looks like from your perspective. But I have a true appreciation for all personality types, and hopefully that answered your question.
Kim?
I think that you probably pretty much answered that question, or what my question is going to be. And that was, when you talked about elected officials, or whatever, the characters, excuse me, the characteristics that have made them the best to be able to work with. So I think you might kind of answer most of that previous question.
Could I add one thing? I know in the 16 years that I've worked in local government, when elected officials express an appreciation for staff, that goes a really long way. And I think I've found in previous positions, when that hasn't been present by an elected body, that creates a challenge for a city manager executive staff to keep staff motivated. So when elected officials are present and they're engaged with staff, again, that really helps reinforce a positive work environment and a strong sense of community.
I know you have a new career as board, as a co-founder of an integrated organization. What do you do to ensure you continue professional role? I know you're very busy, but...
Well, I am working on my golf game, taking golf lessons. Let's see. So professional development is very important to me, and it's something that I really push my staff to focus on. I am a lifelong learner. I love learning, and there's days where I think, "Oh, it'd be great to go get a PhD," or, you know, because I just love school and I love the opportunity to grow and develop myself and others. So one of the things that I do, I just recently, last year, completed a program called Leadership ICMA, and I've included a copy of the report on the right-hand side of my portfolio. I consulted with two other of my classmates, and we did a project for Navajo County, Arizona. The reason, we had the opportunity to choose which project we wanted to work on. And a couple of the reasons why I chose the project in Navajo County was I had never been to that part of Arizona. They had some real financial challenges, and I knew that the financial skills that I have from budgeting and accounting and everything along those lines could be of benefit to that organization. And so I had the opportunity to work with a team of two other individuals from both ends of the country, and we put together what's called the reset strategy, where we identified fiscal threats for them, and this was all a consulting project. And so going into an organization, learning the challenges, and then producing a product that they could use, that they are using today, I stay in touch with several of the staff members down there, was very rewarding. So right now, I've honestly been kind of taking a little bit of a break, because that was a very intensive leadership development program that was about two and a half years. So that really led into the perfect transition time for me to start exploring other opportunities, which includes this opportunity with the City of Northland. One of the things that is on my radar screen is to become credentialed through the ICMA City Management Credentialing Program. So that's something that I know is going to take me probably a good seven to eight years based on my current job title and my master's program being an MA versus an MPA. There's some guidelines within that. So that's a program that I would foresee starting as soon as I can after I transition to the organization.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, I'm going to take it differently. I want to talk to you about your goals, your aspirations, and I want to go back to that, you know, your passions in life and things like that. I want you to think about the future, all right? What do you see yourself, what is going to be your growth, where are you going to go with your future? You're still, you know, you're very young. What are your aspirations?
Thank you. Probably not as young as you think I am, though. Well, my primary aspiration has been to become a city manager, but I don't want that to sound so limited in terms of that's just who I am as a person. I'm an aunt, a sister, a godparent. I have two nieces, two nephews. And one of the things that I always have in the back of my mind in that role is I want to make sure that I make a difference in the world and leave it in a better place. You know, life is a precious thing, and, you know, we don't know how much time we have, and so I like to make the most of the days that I have. And being a good role model for my nieces and nephews and exposing them to the world that I work in, they always like to ask me questions about the cities that they live in. My niece and nephew live in the City of Amarillo, so if there's ever a question about what's happening in Amarillo, they like to ask me to get perspective on it. But really, it's about making a difference. And at the end of my life, when I look back and think about the things that I've done, I want to be able to look back with pride and say, "I left these communities that I worked in in a better place."
Thank you.
Sure.
Presuming the compensation was competitive, what concerns do you have about Northland that might still give you hesitation about accepting the job?
I don't currently have any concerns that come to mind. I think I've done a great deal of research and have a good footing in terms of what opportunities I have here. So there's nothing that comes to mind specifically about compensation or benefits or anything like that.
How do you deal with a department head whose performance is not at the level of excellence you expect?
So I have, my direct reports are managers and supervisors, so I'll shift the context, but I think there's a parallel correlation in terms of how I would work with a department director. I think clear communication, and even before that, having clear expectations between the two of us, knowing what the ground rules are, so to speak, in terms of what that individual expects of me and what I expect of that individual. And then I'm coaching and performing to those goals. So anytime that I have a concern with a direct report, I bring it to my direct reports' attention, and that's through bi-weekly meetings or weekly one-on-one meetings, or if it's necessary to have a conversation with that direct report sooner, then that's my style and that's what I do. I don't think it's fair to let employees, you know, take a week or two weeks and not bring something to an employee's attention if it's something that's significant. And I come at that from my own mindset that I would want my boss to let me know if there was an issue, if I said something inappropriately, if I was out of line in how I interacted with a council member, or if I was just, you know, didn't take ownership of something. I'd want to have that conversation right of way, and so that's the approach I take with my direct reports.
So with that, I'm wondering, what questions do you have for us?
Well, one question, as I mentioned earlier, if you could talk about, you know, I think in my last interview, I mentioned that I know there'll be times where we'll agree to disagree on different topics. So in terms of conflict, could you talk to me about how the council as a whole, how you have decided to manage and handle conflict? And in terms of my role as a city manager, how would you communicate that to me?
So, if I'm hearing...
I just want to say, we're going to all come to you individually and tell you how we feel.
Yes, yes.
If I didn't have any training in that, and I know some councils have actually had training in that, in conflict management. We never have.
That's true.
So I would say right now...
It's a one-on-one?
Maybe I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I would say that I definitely kind of just go to the city manager with an issue or, and I mean, even if I have issues with people, I'd rather talk about it, just like you said, I don't like it to fester. I would prefer to hit it head on, so...
Right, right. And it depends on the conflict, too. If it's a conflict between the city manager and the council, that's one thing. Or if it's a conflict between council, maybe projects that are going on. So I think we handle things differently, you know, depending on what the conflict is. But I think this council really likes to address things head-on, you know, and take things on. Also, we have an annual performance appraisal, you know, and that comes, but I don't like to wait until the last minute, you know, and then surprise anyone. So I think it's really, you will have more input than, you know, than not, is my guess. So... Anybody else have any?
I have my own opinion.
Yes, let's hear it, please.
I, the way I like, the way I would approach the city manager, if you were the city manager, would be the same way I'd approach any other city manager, and that is, that I want to be heard on what issue I'm bringing, and I want you to investigate it and then give me your management decision. Not that I want it my way, or that I want you to have your way, but can we find that common ground, or maybe we can do something that necessarily what was on the left and what was on the right?
Right.
Get some kind of common ground so that we can continue moving forward.
Thank you.
Kind of, does that answer?
Yeah, that's great. The second question that I have is what advice would you give me to build a strong relationship with you as an entire council? And there's probably a little bit of crossover from my last question, but any thoughts on that?
Yeah, again, I think it's one-on-one relations as well as just getting to know you, you know, so, yeah. I am, we hit, we used to, I'm sorry. You know, maybe meeting for coffee, you know, one-on-one, and just establishing some type of relationship, as well as becoming more goal-oriented and talking about what's been going on, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And I think that the mayor hit it right on the head, is I think just getting to know each of us individually. We're nine individuals, you know, nine strong-headed individuals at times, and so getting to know us and getting to know maybe what our vision is for the city and trying to bring that all together. So, you know, maybe Carol and I have the same ideas, you know, and trying to bring all of that together, I think would go a long way.
Thank you.
The transparency, I mean, I really want things to be transparent. You know, I want to not be surprised by anything, and I think that honesty, my, you know, my core values as a person also carry over to my global, my qualities as a council person. So if you can understand that, respect that, and trust, then we'll be fine.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else you'd like to ask?
Those are the only questions that I have for you.
All right. Yes?
Can I just, I want to ask number 10.
Sure, sure.
So this is a weird question, because I'm not sure that anybody can answer this, but if you were selected to be Northland's next city manager, how long would you anticipate serving before applying for a different job? So like I said, I don't know if anybody can really answer that, but I guess it's kind of what your goals are.
One of the things that attracted me about this position in Northland is the range of services that are provided here, and the opportunity to get involved with a lot of different economic development and overall management priorities. You know, one of my primary goals that I laid out in my first-year game plan is prioritization of that work plan. And I believe that's first and foremost because there is so much happening in the city, and I want the city to succeed. And so my vision in terms of this role, I would envision myself being in the role at least five years at minimum, because of the amount of work that is here to do, and I know that this work takes time. And I'm very loyal and committed to the organizations that I work for and become a real part of the fabric of the community. So when you have that emotional attachment to an organization, it's not just about it being a job. It's, and that's where it's important about it, you know, providing public service and being part of the community. And so I would see being in this role at least five years, if longer, awesome. You know, I also have to be realistic that council members change over and, you know, that sort of thing. And so I would do my best to make sure that I was here for at least five years, because I think that's what would be providing a value to this community, if not longer.
Can I just follow up to that a little bit?
Sure.
Because that's one thing I did notice, was that it seems like you've really bought into Wheat Ridge and you've really integrated yourself into that community with the animal shelter and all that. Do you foresee yourself struggling to kind of break away from Wheat Ridge to come to a new community? Because I know, you live in Wheat Ridge currently.
I do.
So do you foresee any struggle there with that?
No, I think as a public servant, you make this natural transition where you still have ties and relationships to the community in which you used to work, and you recognize the opportunity to build new relationships with the new community. So I don't view that as a struggle. You know, the biggest struggle that I have currently is I don't have upward mobility in the organization in which I work. And so, you know, if that existed, that, you know, I may not have put in for this position. But with that said, I also know that I want to be a city manager, and I've been in Wheat Ridge nine years, and I've contributed a lot to that community. I'm really proud of what I've provided to that community, and I'm ready to move on and, you know, learn a new community and make new contributions.
Anyone else? Yes?
Are you aware of any of the challenges that the City of Northland has with their relationship with Thornton, or any of the politics around Thornton being so close to us, and how would you handle that?
I am aware of challenges. I've spoken with Corey, and I spoke with David last Friday. And honestly, those challenges aren't unlike challenges that other communities have with neighboring communities. And I think the way I would approach that is, I'm familiar and know several of the staff members with the City of Thornton. I know the city manager. I had worked to build collaborative relationship, relationships with the staff members, especially those that are assigned to particular projects. And so I also think that, you know, that's true for Adams County, that's true for Westminster, it's true for Federal Heights, you know, all jurisdictions. And one of the things that's important to me is to have a regional presence in representing in representing the city of Northland and making sure Northland has a seat at the table, whether it's at an RTD level, whether it's at a CDOT level. And there's multiple organizations that I feel it's important that I'm supporting staff when staff's at meetings. And, you know, either we're talking about making sure we're preserving grant dollars, if we're applying for new grant dollars. I mean, it's competitive out there. And so I think by fostering relationships on a regional level and throughout the metropolitan area, I think that's really important.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Thank you, Heather.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I look forward to the opportunity of serving as your next city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing these hands down. That's great.
Hey, how are you?
Hello, how are you? Good to see you.
Is that same sheet you wore those hats?
No, it's not. You didn't expect that question, now, did you?
No doubt.
Well, thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you for having me back.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We have a few questions, additional questions for you. And I'll just start out and we'll just kind of do round robin as we've done in the cast. Jim, if you were selected to be Northland's next city manager, how long would you anticipate serving before applying for a job in a bigger city?
Oh, that's a great question. Well, as you could tell from my job experience, I have had several jobs since I left graduate school about 20 years ago. I'll be honest, I always look at kind of five-year goals for myself. When I was at Adams County, I ended up staying five years, and I stayed another five years. I stayed a total of 10. When I went to Florida, the real estate market and some family health issues caused me to come back to Colorado to the city of Northland. Stayed here for about four years, have been in Commerce City nearly five years. I say all that as background, because my resume is what it is. And I think that the important thing to note, though, is that this would be the highest position I've ever achieved in my career, is a city manager. And I think I'm at the point now where I want to be able to serve in a community for a much longer period of time. So while you never know what the future holds, I can commit to you that I would be committed to Northland, hopefully for the rest of my career.
Good answer. Okay, thank you.
Jim, I like this question. Who is your mentor or role model as a city manager? What about that individual makes them your role model? And in what ways would your leadership and management style be different from them?
Hmm. Well, I'd say it's probably my current city manager, Brian McBroom. We have much different styles. He is more of a, I would say, has a humble leadership style. And what I mean by that is that he empowers other people to help lead the organization, and he kind of guides the ship and reins us in when we need to. We are a good combination together, because I'm maybe a little more aggressive, and so he'll rein me in sometimes. And on some occasions, I kind of pull him along, too, and we try to get out there in front of things a little bit sooner. So Brian really has been a great mentor for me. He has experience as a planner, as a community development director, so we kind of came up through the ranks. He's a Midwest guy like I am, so we clicked from day one when I started over there, and he's been a great role model for me.
Jim, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thanks.
You've done an incredible amount of research on Northland. Based on everything you know so far, what do you think we need in a city manager that will be long-term and help us achieve our goals as a council?
Well, I've got, I've got a few points, I think, I want to make about that. I think someone that can probably bring the leadership team together to achieve goals. We've got a very smart group of people here accomplishing a lot of great things. They were doing great things when I was here, and they've continued that. But I think it's the idea of getting the team together and all pulling in the same direction. When you've got a lot of fast-paced things going on, it's really hard to get fractured and kind of focus on the things you're responsible for. And so I think it's really important to get everyone together and, again, trying to help each other out to achieve the common goals. The other thing I would think that you're going to want someone that's going to be well-respected in the county and in the region. I've worked most of my career in Adams County, except for the two years I went to Florida. So I know a lot of the players here, if you will, a lot of the contacts, the business owners, the major landowners. I know virtually almost all of the other city managers in the region, school superintendents, folks like that. So I think there's a lot of benefits of having someone like myself, because you're going to be able to hit the ground running real easily with someone like me. I think the other thing I would say is you're going to want a city manager that's very organized, which hopefully I've demonstrated I'm very organized, but also can be visionary. So you don't get lost in, you know, just doing details and spreadsheets and PowerPoints and things like that. You want someone who's going to be able to inspire the staff, inspire the community to get behind the ideas that you want to implement.
Same question. What are the characteristics that you think make an elected official challenging to work with?
Boy, okay. Well, I think you've got competing demands. I mentioned this a little bit on Saturday. You're trying to focus on the long term. You've got community vision, you're trying to implement long-term projects, but invariably, you're going to be out in the community at the grocery store or getting a phone call or an email from a citizen that wants some short-term issue addressed. And so I've got to be receptive to that, and, but that's a challenge for almost any city manager, is to focus on those long-term things while still helping the elected officials deal with those short-term issues. I think one of the other challenging things with elected officials in general is you have nine different opinions about things sometimes. And it's important to get those out, but it's also important to help you try to reach some consensus so that everyone's kind of pulling in the same direction, kind of the same concept behind that leadership team, except that they work for me, as opposed to me working for you. So it's a little different dynamic there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you kind of answered the question that I was interested in, Jim, on that one. But since there are nine of us, our form of government is council manager, you know, have strong mayor form of government, you know, we're all that way. So how do you make sure that you're actually listening to each of us, but then bringing it back so that there is a common goal?
Okay.
Do you have a strategy for being able to do that with the nine of us who are rather outspoken at times?
Yes, absolutely. I think I'd reference back to some of the comments I made on Saturday. When there are small issues that can be handled, that can be delegated out to a staff member, to a specific department, that don't require a lot of staff time, those can get done pretty quickly. I think those are a simple way for me to respond to your requests and your needs. I think the larger issue, though, is if we've got, again, a bunch of different opinions and we want to try to reach consensus together, I think the best way to do it is to get in the room and have study sessions, talk about the ideas, enable staff to do a lot of research, bring things before you, such as things related to a budget item, maybe concepts about how to implement what you're thinking. And then, again, it's a policy decision from all of you, if that's what you want to do. If it's something that isn't necessarily in the budget, obviously you can reappropriate money in a given year, or you can put it on your plan for the next year, and we can do a little more research and get it implemented.
Can I just follow up on that? I guess what I'm really mostly interested in is how do you not allow one member of council to overshadow or get more attention and their ideas go through? And in some cases, in some councils, not necessarily just turn around a little bit of that. You know, there's the one person that everybody knows without saying it, oh, if that person says something, it's going to get done. And how do you avoid that, again, in a council of nine members?
Well, that's, that's a challenge. It's a constant challenge. We face it in our current city. I've seen it here before, myself. I think the thing is to be frankly very firm with each of you, as necessary, to say, that's a great idea, but it's a policy matter and we're going to have to take back to the entire group. Now, if there's consistently ideas coming up from just one person, you know, maybe that's a larger issue we would want to all talk about together, to see if we can, you know, facilitate more ideas from everybody to get everything out on the table. I understand your question. I think it's a challenge, though, just to make sure that everything is being brought forth to the whole group, as opposed to just trying to implement things as a one-off.
Great. I know you're very accomplished, and you had mentioned if hired, you'd spend the rest of your career here in the city of Northland. I kind of want to know how you would continuously push yourself for professional growth.
Well, I think the big thing is that there's, in any organization, there's an opportunity for continuous improvement. So I would say that currently, I identified some things like a work plan, getting the leadership team pulling in the same direction. But, you know, that could be maybe accomplished over a couple, three years. I think the other thing is you're going to want to grow the organization and look at succession planning. Not everyone who's here now is going to be here forever. We're going to want to grow leaders within the organization. And I think, for me personally, it's identifying new challenges and new opportunities for the city that, again, I can bring to you that maybe inspire me and make me want to add more to my career.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi. I want to talk to you about the retreats.
Okay.
On Saturday, while we were interviewing you, you mentioned retreats a lot. I mean, you know, I, it was a lot. It scared me. So I think, it's a two-fold question. I'd like for you to define for me what you consider a retreat.
Okay.
And then throw that into, how many do you think are really necessary? And what if council were to come back to you and say, sorry, no, we only want to do two a year, or we only want to do one a year? So let's look at it from all those angles. And how would you handle that?
Okay. So I think, first of all, I would say that, again, my experience in Commerce City, we only have two. We have a winter retreat, usually late January, early February, where we try to identify the work plan for the following year. So kind of a year in advance, really an advanced planning retreat. The other one I was referencing was actually our budget retreat. And I would call it maybe a study session on steroids, more than anything. We don't go, you know, out of town or to a place offsite. We actually hold it during a regular Monday night council meeting. We set up the table in the round, in the chambers, as opposed to our study session room. But it turns into about a five-hour meeting, four to five-hour meeting, where we've got department heads making presentations on their budgets. It would have been the second round. Council would have seen them before in June and July, but this would be an August retreat, where we'd go through them again on the camera for the benefit of the public. And then, really, it's an opportunity to get those last-minute things, if you will, out on the table, so that staff still has a month or two to analyze them and identify if there's consensus to get them into the budget retreat, or into the budget, I should say. So really, it's one big one at the start of the year, and then really a large budget study session, if you will. With respect to the leadership team, we have had those quarterly. We usually do at least three, sometimes four, per year. Some of them are the smaller group, meaning just the executive team of the directors. And then other times, we will actually bring in all those division managers. Again, it's not a situation where we go out of town. We'll go maybe to the Adams County Government Center, or rent a space over at the stadium next to City Hall, something like that. But we always incorporate training into that. So it's not just a one-day goal-setting where we're sitting around and thinking big thoughts, if you will. We're actually doing some training along with it. And so it's kind of a twofold effort when we have those staff retreats.
You mentioned training, I'm sorry. But can you drill a little bit more down into that? What kind of training are you talking about that you bring into your retreats?
Well, we have some standardized things that we do throughout the year, you know, employment law, sexual harassment training. We did a reasonable suspicion training the other day. The other things we do is along the lines of organizational development. I would say we had one on crucial conversations, which was really interesting, where it talks about how to diffuse situations, calm situations down, have reasonable conversations with people when, you know, conflicting opinions and emotions are high sometimes in an issue. We've had a personality disc analysis training. We brought in guest speakers from other organizations to come in and speak to us on keep getting organized, using email, using tasks, using the Outlook system. So it's kind of been, I would say, soup to nuts over the last couple of years.
So would I be safe to assume that your definition of a retreat is more like a large-scale, long meeting?
Yeah, it could, yeah. It's not, it's not a weekend, three-day thing, anything like that. I would say it's more of an all-day, you know, meeting, half-day meeting, something like that. We do ours on Fridays, so it's not like we do them on a Saturday. We're bringing in staff or anything like that on a weekend.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for making time, Jim.
Thank you.
In your previous tenure here at Northland, you were reprimanded for not to be representing an employee that you supervised. And I would like for you to speak to that, and how, what did you learn from that? And how do you think that will affect your role as city manager?
All right. Well, first of all, thank you for bringing that up. I actually mentioned it to the leadership team last Friday when I was here. When I was a community development director, I had my real estate license, actually still have my real estate license. I'm not active with it, haven't done a transaction in six or seven years. I was helping out an employee who was in the building division, and he was seeking to buy a home. And so I agreed to represent him as a buyer's broker, if you will, taking he and his wife out on weekends and looking at houses. We never did anything during city time or anything like that. And so it got down to the point where he had found a home he wanted to buy, and I was going to help him close the transaction. Right about that time, we'd been talking about for several weeks, actually, and we were going to be outsourcing the building division, bringing in SafeBuild, who is still here today, providing services to the city. I'd realized at that point I'd created an ethical dilemma for myself, because I was representing this person in a professional capacity as a real estate broker, but I was also the department head responsible for making a recommendation to the city manager about outsourcing that person's job. So I voluntarily went to the city manager and informed him of this situation. What I was reprimanded for was not registering that I had a side business with human resources. But it was much deeper than that, I would say, because he was very concerned that I, you know, compromised the potential for outsourcing that division. And my recommendation to him was that I should be allowed to tell that individual so that they didn't proceed with buying the house, knowing that they might be losing their job. He agreed with that, pulled that person aside. The individual ended up going ahead and purchasing the home anyway. I had handed it off to someone else, not affiliated with me at all. I received no commission for the transaction when it was all said and done. And we ended up outsourcing the building division. The person did lose their job here. And at the time, it was obviously a very bad situation. I felt horrible about it, felt horrible for what I put the city manager in, that position. But now that several years have gone by, I feel actually like I learned a big lesson, and it was a really good decision that I made to go and tell the city manager, even though I knew it was going to potentially get me in trouble. And the reason I say that is because I treated that person with respect. I treated that person like a, like a human being, that I didn't want to put him and his family into a bad situation. Ironically, he works for the Parks Department now in the city of Commerce City. And he sees me on occasion, and he is all smiles, he is, you know, very pleased, he still owns the house. And so at the end of the day, you know, that's what made me feel pretty good about it, is that, you know, I made a bad decision, but I did the right thing when faced with a bad decision.
Mercy.
In your interview on Saturday, we asked a question, and one of the, a little bit of your response was related to you leaving and being maybe a little impatient with the way projects were going. And so I'm just curious, as a city manager, how does that impact you? I mean, things go slow sometimes. So could you hang in there and be patient if that happened again?
Yeah, and that was no, absolutely. There was no reflection on anything that the city council was doing at that time, actually. It was my impatience with the current city manager. We had a lot of different staff people that were advancing ideas that we thought we were hopefully going to get in front of some of the city council members. And frankly, a lot of us were stifled with those ideas. We, they were never presented. There was no reflection on anything that the city council was doing at that time, actually. It was my impatience with the current city manager. We had a lot of different staff people that were advancing ideas that we thought we were hopefully going to get in front of some of the city council members. And frankly, a lot of us were stifled with those ideas. They were never presented, even though we were kind of hearing that maybe some of those ideas might have some legs with the elected officials. So rather than doing an end-around, which I didn't think was appropriate, we just continued to try to advance the ball, try to keep pushing on those things. But at that point, I got frankly, did a little frustrated with that city manager that he wasn't moving things as fast as I would have liked. And part of it was because I thought the city council wanted things to move faster too. And so there was kind of this impasse. He was kind of a block, if you will, in the funnel there. So that's the reason I left. It really wasn't anything that the city council was doing, it was more the city manager.
Follow up on that. So thanks for mentioning that because I think it's great that you had that experience because you know how that feels as a staff person.
Yes.
So would you be open to trying to encourage that kind of thought process to come forward to you as a city manager? How would you do that with staff?
Yeah, I believe, well, I believe in empowering staff, number one. Now, the old joke is sometimes empowerment allows bad decisions to be made quicker. So I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about empowering staff and the bright people we have here at all levels to come up with ideas of how we can improve things, how we can move projects forward, how we can improve the efficiency of the organization. So I'm always going to be open to new ideas and better way of doing things. You know, the sign of a good leader is you surround yourself with a lot of smart people. If I were to walk into the room thinking I have all the answers, I'm not getting off on the right foot there. So the key though with all of that is that we've got to make sure it's aligned with your goals and your objectives so that as we get these ideas, we are going to have to filter them, we're going to have to try to reach some consensus as a leadership team about what maybe is going to meet with some of your objectives and your priorities. But there's no reason to stop good ideas coming in front of you and getting some of your feedback.
Okay. I'm just going to just kind of open it up. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Kara?
So I was thinking about this one. Commerce City impresses me in that how you got the tax passed to do so many capital improvement projects. It was in the ear hub this morning, so that's what's bringing it to my mind. It was a great article. I guess I would like to know how the council and staff got the residents to, on their side, to agree to a tax increase now. I don't think it's very much so to me, it's a no-brainer, but how do you get that across to a city and get such a huge project? I mean, that's a lot of different projects that's included in that. And I love that. And I would love to see something like that happen here where we need a lot of those things done also. So I'm just wondering what you do to get people on your side in that situation?
Okay, well, it was a, first of all, I got to give a lot of credit to my colleague, Michelle Halsted, who some of you know. She is amazing in terms of communication, government relations. And we started that process actually with the Citizen Committee called the Quality Community Founder, Quality Community Initiative, that was it, QCI. And we met with them over a period of a year and a half, every three weeks on Friday morning. And we basically took our long-range financial plan, which was done in 2010, had a list of projects in it that was about a billion dollars' worth of need for the community. Now, that's a full build-out of Commerce City, so it's many decades. But what we did is we started to identify for them, hear the cost of those projects, how do you think we should prioritize these things? And so that was kind of the uses side of the equation. Then we also looked at what are the sources of funds, property taxes, sales taxes, could we put a seat tax on things at the stadium? Should we put a head tax on all the employees we have in the community? Should we institute fees, those types of things? So they went all through the sources side of it too and started vet all those things. Then we did a bit of a roadshow where we went out and did our neighborhood outreaches, which we do a couple of times a year, did a bunch of community meetings, got more feedback. It culminated in the spring, excuse me, January of 2013 where that committee then made a final presentation to the city council and made a recommendation. City council then decided, well, we're going to go ahead and do a sales tax increase. And for those of you not aware, it's a 1% sales tax increase for transportation and parks and recreation projects with no sunset provision. That's what ultimately got passed by the voters in the fall of 2013. But at that point, when council got that recommendation, then they went out through the course of the spring and the summer with their own roadshow. There is actually a campaign committee that was formed, a separate thing from the city that went out and actually raised money from the development community, from landowners, and got a lot more support for it. So it was really the culmination of a two, two-and-a-half-year effort to get to that point. But the key with that, we came with this really cool catchphrase, five projects, five years. And so it was a new rec center, a remodeling of the existing rec center, a new water park, widening Tower Road, and then three neighborhood parks, which was one project. And we joked around the office, it ended up being like seven projects in four years because we're trying to get it done fast. But we had that tagline, people got behind it, they started to really understand what we were going to do. And when they have something tangible they can put their finger on, they go, okay, I know exactly what they're going to do with my money. You usually get a lot of support for it.
Anyone else? You have anything? So then I have a last question for you, or maybe second to the last. Presuming that compensation is competitive, what concerns do you have about Northland that might still give you a little hesitation about accepting that job offer?
You know, I've thought about this a lot, especially since Saturday even. You know, I really don't have any concerns at this point. I know the city does not participate in social security. So, you know, I've made steps in my investing, if you will, when I was here, as well as I have plans in place that I can do without that. So that's why I'm committed to that first question you had about staying here the rest of my career. I don't see that as a hang-up. I see that as a positive because it's actually going to frankly, allow a little more take-home pay to do other things than count on that as the federal government supporting me in my golden years. So that was the only thing I would say that, you know, you may hear from people and I've heard from employees when I was here, when I was, I was on the pension board for a couple of years. So, you know, I really don't have any concerns at this point.
Okay. All righty. So do you have any questions for us?
You know, I don't. I just want to make, I guess, a few other comments. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing me back tonight. I'm sincerely very, very interested in coming back and being your next city manager. Again, as I said this on Saturday, I know it's a very important position. I know it's very important for the future of the community and so hopefully you think I'm the right candidate. I just reiterate that I think I'm a very good negotiator and I could represent the city very well when we need to negotiate things, whether it be with developers, with the county, with our neighbor cities, things like that. I think I've got a lot of experience with that, not only in the public sector but in the private sector with my limited experience with the home builder down in Florida. Also did negotiate, we have collective bargaining with our AFSMI group in Commerce City, so I've negotiated the last two union contracts for the city. So I think I know those employee relations issues too. And regardless of your opinion of unions or not, you know, I think as long as you treat employees with respect and you provide them good benefits and give them feedback about how they're being treated, then hopefully you don't have to get to that point. But if you do, you know, I think I've got some good experience with that. The other thing I would say is that, I mentioned continuous improvement. I'm very open to feedback. I want to reiterate that, that, you know, we all make mistakes, we're all human, but the only way you can improve yourself is by getting that feedback, being receptive to it and moving on and getting better. So I just want to reiterate that I'm very receptive to feedback. If you talk to Brian McBroom, he would say that. And so I think that's the other thing. And also, I think I'm very open and honest in my communications and I would commit to all of you that I would continue that way with my demeanor. There's no reason to be untrustworthy about anything and you get things out on the table, you can solve problems together. I think that's really, really important. And then I do have one final thing that I'm going to leave with you. I started thinking more about the first-year game plan and I know this wasn't the assignment from Ron, but I started thinking about, you know, just a framework and maybe how those projects could start to get organized a little bit. I started to pull some headings from our work plan in Commerce City to show you what I'd be thinking about in terms of kind of a base framework for a work plan, putting those projects in there. So having filled in the blanks, it's more just a blank spreadsheet kind of, and it's not very nicely formatted yet. But again, just to give you some thoughts about what I'm thinking, should you bring me on?
Great. Thank you. All right. No other questions?
All right.
Thank you again, Jim, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And also for bringing this.
All right. I'll just, I'll just get in.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right.
I want to say a few words.
Thank you.
I want to say a different series. Lucy, create soon.
Green.
Oh, yeah.
Have a great evening. Thank you so much for coming by.
Okay, I will now move to go into executive session number one pursuant to section 4.5 parent B of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for the review of applications for any appointed position. Interviews and appointments shall be conducted at an open meeting. And two, pursuant to section 4.5 parent G of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for negotiations concerning contracts except those required to be the subject of competitive bidding. I need a second, please. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.